Okay, hello.
We're gonna call the Tuesday, October 26th work session now. I've got some, I've got some sound coming out of this microphone. Everybody can hear? I'm not used to hearing that. Well, welcome. Thanksgiving week, I mean Thanksgiving week. And we are not making any announcements about when Halloween is, other than it's October 31st.
Oh, that's what it announced.
Pumkin Fest is October 30th, but, you know, we're not designating any day, trick-or-treating day, or anything just for everybody's advice. Jackie's nodding his head, he likes that. Are you for that?
So we go twice, yeah.
My homeowner association called me the other night and said, "I want to know if the door's closed."
So, um, welcome. Um, we're gonna start off with comments from citizens on issues that are not on the agenda. If you have something to say that's on the agenda, we've got somebody, who's got something that's not on the agenda?
Yes.
Come on up.
Mayor, I invited Lloyd Crockett to come and share with us his proposal. I felt that everybody needed to hear what he had to say.
Thank you. Should I stand?
Please don't sit down. Be comfortable. Be comfortable. Speaking of microphones, state your name, and we'll listen to you for a little bit.
For a little bit, okay. My name is Lloyd Crockett. I live at 166 Franklin Road, and I'm a member of St. Philip Catholic Church. Come this November, the St. Philip Church will begin the celebration of its 140th year as a parish here in Franklin. And during that year, we are planning on several different events. The first event will take place on November the 7th, Sunday, November the 7th, and it will be the dedication of an historical marker in front of the original church, which has just recently been completely restored. During that celebration, our plans are to erect two large banners, which will be placed under the portico of the front of the church between the four columns. To give you an idea of this, I brought you copies of an office rendering of what these banners look like.
Just give them the whole thing. We're pretty good at passing. Well, I thought I was pretty good at it.
They use the stone, the other.
Well, that's it, 'cause I'm either, I'm gonna handle one. Yeah, that's right. I need the assistant. Just get Caesar's, it goes down.
Do you have enough copies?
We're good.
Oh, yeah.
All right. All right, Lloyd.
Well, this is, this is basically the reason I am here. These two banners, thank you, exceed, we have been notified by the Code Department that these two banners exceed the limits established by the Code Department. And that is the reason, as I said, that I am here. I'm here to respect for the request from the board, a variance that these two banners can be displayed off and on during this one-year period from November 2010 until November the 6th, 2011, which will be the actual date of the 140th dedication of St. Philip Church. The banners will be in the exact location where you see in the drawing. They will be under the portico of the church. They will not be on the lawn. They will not be close to the sidewalk. They will not be close to the street. They, during that year, there will be anywhere from five to seven special events planned at the church. And during those special events, our plans are to shortly before the event, to raise the banners, and then shortly after the event, to lower the banners. They will not stay up permanently during the year. Only during the special events that take place, and as plans now stand, that would be about five or to seven events during the year. Basically, this is the reason I'm here. We very much like to do that. There are only two banners. We do not feel that they would distract. We do feel they would add to the special importance of the occasion that the church will be going through. I will be short, and let me just simply close my remarks with a little bit about St. Philip Church, and express some personal thoughts. Forty-six years ago, I met my wife here, and she was a member of St. Philip Parish, and there were 28 families in St. Philip's, 46 years ago. Come forward those 46 years, there are now 2,100 families in, in St. Philip's, which represents approximately 5,500 members of St. Philip. That congregation now supports some 70 ministries in, through the church. Fifteen of those ministries reach beyond the church boundaries. In other words, they serve the greater Franklin community. To name just a few very briefly, Grace Works Ministries, the churches on the board, Habitat for Humanity, My Friend's House, Meals on Wheels, a prison ministry. The Christmas basket program began 42 years ago. They delivered that first year, two baskets. This past December, they delivered almost 400 to, in the greater Franklin community. I mention all this, not to boast about St. Philip, because simply to put the impact that St. Philip, like all other churches in this city, the impact they have on the quality of life that we have here, that we all enjoy here in Franklin. I truly believe God has blessed this city with the churches that he has placed in our midst. So, that is the reason for my request. I will leave it up to your decision, and whatever that decision is, I'll assure you that St. Philip will abide.
Fine.
Thank you, and it's, it's great to celebrate.
You wanna acknowledge to the audience and the TV people why you're wearing a pink shirt?
Well, I will, and I'll even take it up.
Why don't you take it off? So, we talked about it, and people are gonna have some questions, so you might wanna just go ahead right now and explain.
Well, I will, before getting into this. It's, we've created a lot of awareness throughout the country, and Franklin is doing its part specifically. The, our fire department has had shorts that they are selling for $15 to promote awareness to breast cancer. And anytime city employees who are, many are participating by wearing the pink shirt, and people in our community can participate as well for a very worthwhile cause, and we encourage them, and I'm more than happy to.
Stop that for a second, there.
But again, they can be purchased at our, at our fire department.
Our fire crews are wearing them. They wore them yesterday, wear them today.
Rocky, where's Rocky? Is he back?
I was modeling mine yesterday, I'll have you know. So, getting them out.
All right. So, but with respect to St. Philip's, and congratulations on celebrating your tenure here in the, in the community, and we're more than happy to work with you to celebrate. We weren't aware that you were coming before us, but this group isn't charged with the responsibility for granting any variances, but maybe tomorrow you can come and speak with Gary Luthman, our Department of Building and Neighborhood Services Director. We'd be more than happy to work with you to help you celebrate.
I'll be glad to do that. I'll be glad to do that. Thank you.
Well, listen, and congratulations. I actually got an invitation. If my Methodist minister will let me come, I'll be there. The principal will be there. That's what we call him. Yeah, there's a couple of us refer to Dr. Hill as the principal. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you. Glad to come.
Okay, anybody else? Item number three, status update on flood response and hazard mitigation grant program.
Let me just give you a brief update. Yesterday at 5:00, marked the end of our application process, if you will, for folks to voluntarily submit their property for consideration for the hazard mitigation grant program. Yesterday at 5:00. And so, and again, that's a voluntary program, and we've done some significant outreach to the community and to the areas most impacted by the flood, to see if there's interest there. And we had 25 properties submit applications into that program. Again, voluntary, and those folks can, can decide up until closing if they wanna participate or not. And of those 25, we had previously identified eight of those properties as substantially damaged. There are seven additional properties in this group that we would say are, we haven't determined as substantially damaged, but they're what we would call close, and we'll need to look further at that and see how that fits in. And so, what we'll be doing is, is doing a review of both the base eligibility of those properties, and then an evaluation of how this fits in from a cost-benefit analysis approach to the grant program, as we understand it, and the guidelines that TEMA has provided us. So, that will come to you, I would expect, between now and the end of the calendar year, for some additional review and discussion. But again, 25 properties submitted. Eight are already previously been identified in the substantially damaged category, and we feel there's another seven that, that are in that, in that, in that close to substantially damaged, and may, in combination with the ones that are already seen as substantially damaged, may make sense in a, in a broader group application. But we'll be looking at that, and how the package might totally come together, and get to you with an evaluation, and, and some additional information to consider how we move forward in, in this grant program. One other item I wanted to touch base with you on, in terms of our, what are called project worksheets, and reimbursement requests to the federal government in terms of our flood response, and the recovery and response costs that the community incurred. We have now closed out the initial submission of those project worksheets, and did that about a week and a half ago, and submitted about six, just under $620,000 worth of reimbursable costs. There are a couple categories where we submitted general worksheets that had a zero value, 'cause we were, at this point, unable to come to a total conclusion on those costs, and FEMA was understanding of that, and indicated that that's not unusual, and those couple issues are ones that we can go through and work with them when we go through the closeout process with them. So, our first group of, of applications, we expect to receive a check by the end of November for that first group of, of reimbursables that were submitted earlier in this process. And generally, the dollars start to flow approximately six months after the event, which would get us into November. And again, that first, first group of roughly around $200,000 worth of submissions that were submitted earlier in this process, we expect to start to see the money flow from that, the reimbursement flow from that. I do wanna offer this comment, and I say this in humility, but I was proud of it. The FEMA representative that I did the closeout meeting with, Todd Horton, Assistant Fire Chief, and I sat down with him to sign some documents and go over some closeout issues, and at the end, he stopped, stopped it and said, "I just want you to know, I do this all over the country, and I have not seen a city respond the way your city responded. You were organized, you had complete information. When we had questions, you responded, responded quickly, gave us everything we wanted, and then some, many times." And he said, "You know, I don't say this to everybody, but you guys were outstanding." And you have to know this individual, and work with this individual, appreciate that. He's not a throw bouquets at your feet kinda guy. And so, we were really, I felt very good about it, and wanted to share that with you, and that's a, a great reflection of our, of our staff and the efforts they did from day one of the event through now and ongoing. But I just thought I'd share that comment with you as well, so. Anyway, I'd be glad to take any questions here.
Okay. Saying now, we'll go out and forward Blue Bag Recycling Program. Ms. Becky's here. Get the clicker.
We're now 13 or 14 weeks into the Blue Bag Program, and wanted to come to you and have Becky give an update, so.
It's about 13 bags.
I just wanted to give you an update. I know we said we did this all along. Basically, I wanted to say, okay, we started July 12th. Last Friday marked the end of Week 15, and the initial goal was to divert 15% of our annual municipal waste that we control, to divert the 15% from the landfill.
That's in weight.
It's a measure by weight.
Weight.
Yes. The top line you see, and this last week was great, I double-checked the math two or three times, 55.37% participation. That is unheard of. Yay, Franklin, thank you. That's my PSA for the day. Thank you, thank you.
And Week 14 was fall break for the Williamson County Schools and FSSD, so that may have been why we dipped down a little bit. No, that happened at our house.
The highest week for diversion, which is the lower line, the darker gray line, was Week 13. Actually, it was Week 11 at 13.96%. And one of the things we're gonna see, and the rest of this will be more or less just a reminder of the public education points, the things we've seen in the field, things the drivers have called in, how we're handling the process, and if there are any questions or any specific issues or items, I'd love to hear from you all. Again, participation is great. We really appreciate it, and now the, the next step will be to educate that 55.37% of people in our community that, hey, there are other things you can include in that blue bag.
What's the issue on glass?
On glass? Okay.
If we took glass, that number would jump up to 30%.
It would, but as the price of paper goes up in the international and national markets, we would not get as good a rebate. What we're working toward is eventually to get a rebate through the recycling center. And the better commodity or the better product you provide, the more money you get for it, or the, or the greater value it has.
But then, on the other hand, we're still paying that weight when we, when we take it to the landfill.
Yes.
So, there's gotta be some.
And that's a decision you all are welcome to make. We originally said no glass and no styrofoam, because there is no market for.
Well, styrofoam doesn't weigh anything.
Mm-hmm. And glass, glass is the heavy.
Right.
And if we decide to take glass, then that's a decision to make. I think it would be a lot easier to add an extra item than it would be to take away.
But the issue with glass is that it breaks, and it contaminates the rest of the stream.
Sure you can. Well, that's right. Well, now wait, wait, wait. Don't, you don't, let's, let's make sure we know, yeah.
The reason that we don't take glass is that it does contaminate the waste stream. But it is a heavy item. And if we, if we're looking to never get a rebate, or not to expect a rebate from the recycling center, and from our recyclables, then taking glass would not necessarily be as big a problem. Now, I would, I would hope that we would get a rebate, we can provide a better product. They have complimented us on.
But is the rebate anywhere near the relationship to what it costs us to dump that? What's the, what's that relationship, sort of?
It depends on how.
I mean, the rebate might not be any more than what we'd save by not dumping that.
Right now, we get no rebate.
Well, I know that.
So, right now.
But even if it was something, my point is, is if it costs us X to, to dump it in the landfill, and that by far, I think without question, is our heaviest product.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
And if our, if it costs X to dump it, but if the rebate doesn't equal X, then we're, we're, we'd be better off. Who cares if we get a rebate?
Mm-hmm.
And have we done the math to look at that?
We've looked some at it, but we've never separated glass to find out exactly how much weight there would be, that we would separate it.
Can we really determine how much glass is going to the landfill? I think that would be my number one question, 'cause there's still a lot of use of the recycling centers depositing the glass.
I can talk with the county and see what kinda numbers they're getting at the drop-off sites for glass, because that's pretty much the one item they do still see a lot of activity on, at the drop-off sites.
But, Bev, your statement is, if we have glass, it has to be in a different container?
My question is.
It doesn't?
My question is, at one time, this is my question, that, that does it not contaminate the other stuff in there? Because if it breaks, you've got those glass particles, and I thought once, we had talked like a year or so ago about contamination of glass, so tell me about that.
Okay, if, if the glass breaks, it does contaminate the plastics and the paper. And that's where you get a lower, lower grade commodity, if you will, or it's not as good quality, because it is contaminated with glass. So that, on the back end, when they start to use these items, they have to process those more, you know, more stringent, more time, more energy. And so, mixing them together, having the glass in there, is, you know, it's, it's a choice for you all to make.
We couldn't divide them separately? Have one container?
Yeah, that may have to have a different truck.
No, but see, you've got.
You'd have to have a different truck.
Yeah, you would. And then the other thing is, if you put glass in, plastic, and it shatters and breaks, it pokes holes, and then.
I wondered about that, too.
I mean, you have all sorts of issues, aren't you?
Except that it's still a dollar and cents issue. If, I mean, if, if we take glass, if we can estimate how much glass we take, or somehow come to some, there's gotta be some sort of national average of something, somewhere, everybody's got a national average. And we figure out what that weight costs, and if we can save that much, it may, it may not, it may not, it may make a lot of difference, it may not make any difference. In other words, it, we may not, it may be to our advantage to go ahead and do glass, and even if it does contaminate the stream, we still may be better off, because that's a lot of weight we're not taking to the, to the landfill. And, and it's just, to me, a matter of dollars and centra, and anything else. I mean, we can't make that decision unless we know what the numbers are.
And I'll be glad to come back.
Yeah, let's take some additional look at that. I mean, this is how we evaluated this at the beginning, that there was more downside associated with trying to take glass, and trying to work with the market. 'Cause part of what made this work is our recycling partner was able to take more content than they were previously. So, I think we need to weigh all of that in looking at this, but we'll be glad to look at that and see what the trade-offs are.
Well, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, if we look at that, would you not come back to us with maybe an alternative of how it would be collected, rather than shoving it all in the blue bag? Because honestly, personally, I mean, I recycle almost everything I can, and I just can't see throwing all my glass in there, and then having it break, and then having it poke through the bag, and then having it on the curb, and on the alleyway, and all that stuff.
But right now, you can still take through the recycling center. You've got, you've got it out for recycling glass.
I'd take it now.
A lot of people still do.
I'm just curious.
But I will tell you, a lot of people don't.
Well, I think that's a problem.
And, and it's purely, I think we're seeing right now, with 53, 55.37% participation, that people are doing it. I'm guilty. I've never recycled until we got the blue bag back. Never. It was a pain, I didn't wanna mess with it. But I also noticed that my, I, I don't, and of course, this is very unscientific, but, you know, my canister weighs just as much as it did before, but I've got three bags out there to recycle, so, and, and glass is by far the heaviest part of that whole, whole part. So, I just, if we're trying to get a percentage, you know, that percentage, you know, putting styrofoam in, it's not gonna help, because. Doesn't weigh anything. You know, so.
And I agree with that, and, and, you know.
And we get charged by the weight. That's the only thing we get charged by. Nothing else. At the landfill, we get charged by the weight.
It's tons.
It's purely weight.
It's tons, by the ton.
So, you know, the heavier stuff that we can recycle, the better off we're gonna be financially, so.
One, one last question for you. Someone had suggested a cart behind the compactor that we're using right now, the truck, to put the glass in. Did anything ever come of that?
That's a possibility. That does include additional monies for, for the.
Trailer.
It's a trailer, yeah. It's a trailer of sorts, and it's got a, a top on it that kinda closes down. And that might be an option.
Well, I, I guess the other thing is, if you look at that chart, and, and you're at, you know, at 53%, we were, we were at 11%, 11.41, 55% at 11.41. You know, that number's been really consistent, even as the, even as the participation has grown. So, you know, the question is, is 15% even a reasonable goal to begin with, based upon the fact, are we gonna, truly, are we gonna get much more than 55 or 60% of people participating? I would say, there's gonna be a ceiling there somewhere, that.
55% is a pretty good number.
I would think it's a great number.
And, and the 11.41 can get better, as people realize it's not just your aluminum cans or your milk jug that you can recycle. And that's where I think the, the public education will come into play.
Okay, keep, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
At what point do our rebates kick in? Do we actually start?
When paper reaches, I think the number was 125 a ton.
So, it's a market issue?
Yes, it is a market issue.
Not a quantity issue for that.
No, sir. And we, we continue to get rebates from cardboard, and from metal, and other things that we, that there are other markets for. We use, you know, any of the white goods we collect curbside, go to Bubba Miller, out on Carter Street Pike. The cardboard, we do take to the recycling center, and we get a rebate back on it. But it is a market, it's market driven.
So, we were asking for 15% reduction in volume.
Mm-hmm.
Weight.
In weights, which is a lot different.
So, how much is it now? Is it 15% now?
No, we're 11.
11.41. We're bouncing somewhere between 11 and 12.
I thought it was 13% last.
Margaret, look at that line over there, that 10% line. Can you see that 10% line?
See the bottom?
The bottom line?
I can't see.
Look on the one over there, maybe you can see that one.
Angle's bad.
That bottom line is our weight percentage.
It was 13 about four weeks ago.
Okay.
Just to underscore.
It went down.
So, but the point is, that we really don't, we really don't know where the participation mark is. That will correlate to 15% reduction?
No, we don't. And, and I think that's part of why we said it was a pilot program, to see, I mean, every community is different, and where I got the 15% is just from calling folks around the country that are in other organizations that I am involved in, and said, "Hey, when you started your curbside recycling program, what'd you, you know, what'd you start out with? How did, how did you start?" And most of them had 20, 25%, but they were talking about an average over the first year, or a year and a half. They didn't necessarily have the numbers week by week, the first year. And they've been doing this for three to five years, and, and kinda started to see their average.
And where are they, where are these communities now?
These communities are around 25 to 30%.
Of participation?
Of, of diversion.
The diversion.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Of weight.
And so, we're, we're still early in our pilot.
After a couple of years?
Well, but what are they including there?
Most of them do all of the plastics. Most of them do the metals that we do. Some of them include glass, some of them do not. And I think, and, and glass is heavy. I mean, it's a heavy item.
Whereas glass and paper are gonna be your heavy.
Yeah.
Okay, you got, is that it? You got more?
I've just got a couple of things. Please remember.
No glass in blue bag?
No glass.
Yeah, just to talk about.
No foam in blue bags. We have seen some styrofoam, and as we start to get into the holiday season, people start to, to have things shipped in. No styrofoam. No household waste. Believe it or not, we've seen a lot of batteries, cell phones. We take the, both the electronics and the batteries at Century Court in the bulk of the drop-off program, and we do recycle those. We've seen a lot of food items. If you can rinse the tinfoil or the tin out, that's fine, but the food items, we need to, to see go away. Those are actually trash. Or compost, depending on what you have, if it's a paper box, cardboard box. And then we've seen a lot of clothes, and a lot of stuffed animals, for some reason. You wanna get rid of your stuffed animals, Goodwill, Grace Works, clothing. I was shocked. I was surprised. So, that's why I included this. And if you Google a pile of clothes, this is kinda, just pile of clothing, this is kinda what you.
That's not an actual.
No, this is not an actual photo.
Looks like my daughter's closet.
And the last one is just to please ask you to keep the, the bag five feet away from the container, or as far away from the ca, container as you can. The blue bags are not as sturdy as some of the other household trash bags, so we see that they get, you know, on days like today, that stuff will blow quick. This one is.
Very good.
Perfect.
Other than, other than, you've got a broken rail on your tow.
Well, I said that when I put.
And it makes it really difficult to pick it up, having gone on one of those pickups.
It does. When I saw, when I saw this picture, and I pulled it out.
That one needs to be refurbished.
I blew it up, and I said, "We gotta put a ti, we gotta put a tag on this and get a new bar on that can." It's true. And then I thought, "This was pretty good." Thank you for recycling.
What happened to Mark?
Good job. Good job. Well, and that's why it's gonna be...
Next slide.
I did warn him.
I don't know, I think you're looking a little older in that slide.
I just thought that was a classic picture.
We're all guessing what Andrew's gonna go for in Halloween, so...
Yeah. You never know.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Anything else?
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Item number five, consideration of resolution two thousand and ten seventy-nine, a resolution to authorize the mayor to submit an application to the Tennessee Department of Transportation for a transportation enhancement grant. Any questions, comments, concerns on that one? Okay, Michael?
I, I want to commend Andrew and staff on working so hard on this and putting the amount of work that they've put into this. And, uh, what I've learned is there are other local, uh, agencies that are also applying for a P.D.O.T. grant, and maybe in their second year of applying for this. So we have local competition. So, and, one thing that, I hope that we don't count on this too much, uh, and that we can still look at alternative ways for us to partner with other areas, because this takes about nine months to do.
Which we are, we're still looking at.
So, uh, if we could go ahead and still look at these alternatives, and, and not just sit flat-footed while we wait to hear from this, 'cause...
As, as Autumn was gonna was saying, I think when we begin the C.I.P. discussion in the next week or so, and, um, that does need to be part of that discussion, if possible, as part of that project.
Yeah.
Why does that a question?
Anne had a question.
Oh, what, what, is there any kind of projection on the cost based on this idea? And what would our twenty percent be?
Correct. Um, the projection right now, and including it, is you're looking at not only the road construction, but you're also looking at the landscaping improvements, interpretive signage, interconnectivity to, uh, not only within the park itself, but to the neighboring subdivisions and administrative costs. We're looking at around one point two million. That would include, that would include everything, and the local match, it's eighty-twenty, and the local match is around two hundred and fifty thousand.
So that would be in line with a, a kind of a low estimate on what we were, what we were thinking.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. You did three hundred and sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
Thirty-sixty-nine. Okay, thank you, guys. Keep up the good work.
This also, Mary, this also was in your voting session as well.
Oh, yeah, we saw it, so we could get the application in.
Okay, uh, any concerns about six?
Uh, six, we're gonna need to defer from both this meeting and the voting meeting. There's still some work going on with the applicant owner.
Okay, item number seven, consideration of ordinance two thousand and ten dash seventy-five, and also a men title eighteen, section eighteen dash one twenty-nine, and section eighteen dash two ten, to establish new water and sewer user rates established in the public hearing for November ninth, two thousand and ten. The first reading is on the agenda tonight, um, because of our time issues on this one.
And we did distribute to you an updated, uh, ordinance, uh, for the new rates. Uh, I think that went out to you yesterday, that reflects, I think, where we ended up at the end of our work session last week, in terms of the adjustments to both water, which was, uh, the availability charge, uh, going up a dollar sixty, and then, uh, the, um, on the wastewater, and that was across all usage classifications, and then on the wastewater side, that was going up two dollars and twenty-five cents for residential inside, um, what was it, four dollars for, uh, commercial inside, and then eight dollars each on the outside, both residential, is that right? Both, both, commercial went up eight dollars. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The commercial inside and outside both went up eight dollars, the residential outside went up four, and the, uh, residential inside went up two twenty-five, which is, I think, where we ended up in our discussion, uh, at the end of last Thursday. I did also want to distribute to you a comparison in terms of, uh, how our rates compare to others in the area, in terms of water rates. Um, let me pass that around, uh, just for you to see. Uh, if we do what is proposed at this point, we will still remain, uh, well under the average of, of others in the region, both on the water and the wastewater side. On water will be just under six dollars below, uh, what is the average right now for the other entities that provide water in our immediate area, and then on the wastewater side will be about six dollars, uh, less than that average as well. Uh, of course, there are fewer wastewater providers than there are water providers, but that does give you a context and, and showing where at least everyone is at this point in terms of, uh, the rates as we could, could determine them. I don't know if others are considering increases, that's always a possibility, but this is a snapshot in time where they are now in terms of rates, what our current rates are, and then now, based on our discussion on, especially on the residential inside, what, what they look to be.
Okay, so this reflected the, the, the goal that we tried to, tried to get you all to do at our meeting last Thursday, so it's there. Um, and I guess, uh, if you look at this chart, what, what you see is that, and if I remember correctly, that our average user is about seven thousand gallons, somewhere in there, and that, and that's why we used that number on the right. And if you look at that, um, the, that includes water and sewer.
Top is water, bottom is wastewater.
Wastewater. So, so the average water bill, our water bill would be thirty-one fourteen, is that correct? And then the sewer bill would be, uh, thirty-three ninety-six?
Correct.
So go from thirty-one to thirty-three.
So, um, no, we'd go from twenty-nine fifty-four to thirty-one fourteen, which is the buck sixty, and then we'd go from thirty-one seventy-one to thirty-three ninety-six, which is a dollar, two dollars and twenty-five cents. So, uh, three dollars and eighty, eighty-five cents. Three dollars and eighty-five cents a month for the average consumer within the city of Franklin.
Okay.
And this is, uh, and we all saw, some, Anne had talked about spreading that out to see, but this is the five-year recovery program.
So five-year recovery, this tracks us, we had, we had talked about water being on average about a four percent increment, uh, per year, and then on the sewer side, about seven percent. Uh, what this also does is addresses that fixed cost component, which we're recovering for the first thousand gallons, about sixty percent on the water side, and only about fifty percent on the sewer side, using rough numbers that we're recovering in terms of those fixed costs today. So this helps close that gap a little bit, and then keeps the consumption side where it is now. Does not change the consumption side.
So also, as I look at this, then, the only, on water, the only utility district that we would be higher than would be Harpitt Valley, uh, which is where we buy our water from, which is kinda makes sense, they'd be a little bit lower. And we're significantly lower on wastewater on, from Brentwood and H.V.U.D., so, just so everybody can see that. Yes, Michael?
How do we set the reclaimed water cost to consumers?
Good, Margaret. Yeah, go ahead. The reclaim is, is not unlike the water and wastewater, of course, you need to establish what the cost of service is, and then establish your rates. We opted not to look at those this year because there's a lot of other, we didn't wanna overcomplicate factors, and as far as water, wastewater, and reclaim, so that, again, is another thing we need to take a look at in the future. Of course, the development, tap access, system development, effluent development fees, as well as reclaim rates as well. So currently, we're recovering, uh, in reclaimed sufficiently, as far as operations go.
So, okay.
I've got some questions. In fact, I didn't realize that, that we don't have in this new thing from Jackson Thornton, we don't have the little thing that says how much we are not recovering. You know, there was, there was a page, there were some pages before that talked about how far we were down on, on the recovering, and those are not in this.
Sure.
Are they? I mean, maybe I'm just missing it.
The line charts, like on page five, uh, that provides you with the cost of service?
No, 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 I'm talking about that, that, that page that said, okay, we're under recovering by X amount of money. Is that in here? It was in, it was in...
It says fourteen on the water.
Maybe I just didn't see it.
And twenty-seven on the sewer.
No, 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 I'm talking about the...
The dollar amount.
The thing that looks, that looked like this, and it said how much we were, I mean, this one is just residential inside, residential outside, but at that meeting Thursday night, we also had another page that said, we are under recovering by X amount of money.
We don't have any...
And that's not in, that's not, I, I didn't bring my other one, thinking that this was the thing that we had before.
I think that was in the, in the first presentation, where he was trying to establish what the recovery is.
We talked, we talked about it Thursday night, yes.
You've got the percentages in the bar chart, and then you've got the line chart that shows cost comparison.
Right, but there was another, there were some other sheets that said, we are under recovering by...
So like a summary, is summary state?
Yes, it was, uh-huh, and I, I didn't realize until right now. I didn't think about bringing my thing from...
I think it was a summary, so like a summary state. Well, I'll be happy to have that developed and...
Well, well, but what I'm saying is, though, I wanted to ask about some of those things because, uh, you know, the, the memo that Russ sent to us, because I understood that that under recovery was my, uh, was, uh, something that we needed for repair, replacement, uh, and so on. Uh, uh, you know, and, and based on what Russ sent to us dated October twenty-fourth, it said our system development fee, on the front page of that, it says our system development fee is made for the purpose of enabling the city of Franklin to repair and replace its facilities as needed. And so what I wanna know is, where's that storm, that system development fee in our this? I mean, whenever it says that, that recovery, that we are not, uh, is it this? No, it was, it was just a sheet that had, it, it looked kind of like, it looked kind of like this, uh...
No.
No.
If I can summarize, though, the, the items that you wanted to highlight on those pages were the debt service.
Right.
And the, and the future, what, what he was calling rate-funded capital.
Okay, yes, okay.
And, and to cut to the chase, it was a million dollars in water, and it was approximately three million dollars.
That's right. Thank you.
Waste floor.
Uh, what, what I sent you was the, the statutory limitations of what the system development fees and the access fees can be used for, but the system development fees would not, I don't think, under any circumstances pay for all of the, the capital costs that are involved in maintaining the lines, excuse me, and the plants and pump stations, et cetera. Um, if you recall, on the water side, um, we don't have a great deal of area, other than the very farms, that will be new customers. We've almost maxed out on the customers. So system development fees are more or less the equivalent of an initiation fee when you join our system, where you pay a small portion towards the sunk capital costs that we have in the plant and in the lines. I think what Jackson Thornton was trying to forecast is what the, based on the total number of assets, total amount of assets that we have, and, and recurring amount of improvements in, in maintenance that would be required every year, that, that's where the million dollars came from. And it's above, it's, it's not necessarily above and beyond what the system development fee produces, but it's clearly, the system development fee alone would not fund.
Well, now, it shows here, though, on your memo, that the system development fees apparently has an account balance of six million dollars.
That is correct.
And so I guess my question was, is that million above and beyond the six million that we already have in that? And that's the reason I was asking, you know, that whenever we talked about this, what have we been doing lately, and what are we projecting that this money is going to go for? Uh, uh, because whenever I read this, I thought that, over the years, we have been, uh, gaining, is, is the system development fee what we call the tap fee, or not? What, what's the tap fee and what's the, I know we get two fees from every new customer.
You know, I always forget moving...
Aye.
Tap, tap and access.
Tap, tap and access, but what's what? What's what?
The access is the access fee.
Okay.
And there's also an installation fee. On the sewer side, there's a disposal fee as well, so...
But now, and the installation fee, basically, that says to be paid, uh, the city of Franklin for the purpose of reimbursing the city its expenses.
Correct.
So that's not a fee that we're charging to any customer, even a brand-new customer, right?
Yes, if we have to go from the main to the property.
Okay.
Right, and then cost of meter install.
Okay, but on those other fees, don't we just have kind of a, I, I know you're talking about that they are, uh, the, the amount of them are based on the meter size, but, I mean, what, what are, what are those two fees? I saw one of them in here, but I mean, I thought they were fairly large fees.
Well, they're not, I wouldn't say that they're small. I don't know if they're lar, again, I would say they're not large enough.
I mean, we're talking a thousand, fifteen hundred, what?
Well, they're, they're in the back of the memo.
But there's, there's one of them, I saw them there, but I couldn't see the other one.
Uh, for a normal home, it's fourteen hundred dollars.
Which one is that?
That's on page...
The next-to-last page.
No, I, the page numbers on there.
Right there, right?
Okay, so that's the access fee, then what about the system development fee?
Well, they're, they're, they're all together at the top of this page.
Okay, okay.
Side by side. The access fee, again, three-quarter inches of normal home would be twenty-one hundred dollars, fourteen hundred dollars for the system development fee, and the installation is two sixty-four.
So we've really been, over the years, since these have been, uh, at this, at this rate, we've been gaining, we've been getting a lot of money in the system development fee over the years. I don't, I'm not saying that we're getting a lot now, because as, as you stated, we're kind of, uh, getting to the limits of our, of this. But I, you know, that was my question before, what have we been spending this money on? Has it been going just to, what does it say, repair and replacement? Or has it been spent on other things? I, I mean, this, this was my whole question about asking, how does this all break out?
Well, I haven't...
And back when I originally said, what, what have we been, what, what projects have we been spending the money on?
Well, I haven't done the research prior to my arrival here in two thousand and four, but in two thousand and four and five, some of the money was used for projects. Uh, if you remember, sometime around two thousand and six is when there was a lot of discussion about expanding the water plant, to expanding to four million gallons a day. So essentially, two thousand and six through two thousand and eight, we stopped using any of the system development fees and holding back for that improvement to the water plant. To a great extent, that was done on the sewer side as well. From two thousand and eight, uh, is once again when we started doing projects. If you remember, after this board was elected in two thousand and seven, it was the summer of two thousand and eight when we decided to push ahead with the projects and go ahead and borrow some money in order to get those rolling, 'cause there were a, a large number of projects that had been more or less held in abeyance, uh, until we decided how we were gonna fund those. And, and because we...
But on sewer, weren't we talking about extending for growth? Weren't those projects, I'm, I'm asking, I don't know.
I don't know that many of those projects, we'll have to go back and...
What about that, is it nine mile? I said three mile the other day.
Five mile.
Five mile, five, I knew it was somewhere, it's a mile.
You're close.
Close, no. Close enough.
But we also did some cross-connections, we did the meter valves, I mean, there was a combination of water and sewer projects involved. But essentially, we borrowed the money in 2008 to begin those projects, and we had, we had, like, other bond issues, a three-year window to spend that money. So, we have not yet assigned all of those projects to whether they will take some of the system development fees or be fully funded with bonds. We have actually gone about four million dollars over on projects, above and beyond what we borrowed, so that's going to cut into a portion of those system development fees that have accrued. But it's typically only when we close the projects, and we're getting close to that now, that we actually wrap that up and make a final determination of whether we're going to use system development fees or bond money for...
Now, wait, just a minute, though. System development fees, it seemed to me, based on this information in municipal code, was to repair and replace facilities, whereas the access fee was to be used because of growth. And from what I saw in here, it said that, on that 2005, 2005 refunding, it says, "Based on the guidance of the Board and City Administrator, improvements of wastewater plant funded by bonds were to be split, split between access fees and operations on a three-to-one basis." Looking at the wastewater operations here and the wastewater access fees, that 2005 certainly doesn't look like it's been split three-to-one, it's like six hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand there. So, I, I mean, I'm trying to get at, the access fee was supposed to be paying for the exten, well, the, the part that was required through growth, and, you know, it looks like that's way, that's, that's a much larger part of this. And so, whenever we're talking about requiring water customers and sewer customers to pay a lot more money, that's the reason I was asking, how, how is this divided up? Because it looks like it should be divided up where much more is dependent upon the access fee. Understand that we're not collecting them the way we are now. However, you know, we, i, i, if we have it this way, in the sense that certain fee is supposed to be paying for a certain thing, I, I don't, maybe it's not like impact fees for roads, but it seemed to me, based on what the municipal code said, that the access fee needed to be paying for the growth, the system development fee needed to be paying for the repair and replacement, and then the operations, I couldn't figure out where the operations were here on the account balances. Were they included in the system development fees, or what? It, it looks like we're out of balance there.
Well, I'll be happy to sit down with you and go through all of those numbers, if you wish, but I think if you want to, to get an overall view of where we stand, the top of page three is probably the best place to start.
Exactly.
You know, leaving operations out, which has its own separate balances.
Well, see, and we didn't have them here, we, we don't have operations, but go ahead.
We have a summary of system development fees, access fees, and bond proceeds. This is how we fund our capital projects. This is how the projects are paid for.
Well, let me, whenever you say bonds, though, the bonds have to be repaid some way. Are they being repaid from the operations fees? Are they being paid, are they, are the bond proceeds being paid from the access fees?
The answer is yes.
To all of them.
All of that.
They're divided up between those two funding sources, and when you look at it, the, the access fees are paying, in this sample, the, the 2011 debt service sample, it's paying about 3.1 million from access fees, it's paying about 1.7 from operations water, wastewater operations. So you've got a substantial amount that was divided up in place there, a point Russ was making is that the 2008 projects, we actually still have the ability and will come to you with how you want to assign that, between access fees and operations. What the cost-of-service model has tried to look at is, what's the total cost of our existing infrastructure that we have now? And if you look at that going forward, and you do something like a depreciation schedule, how would that come out? What would your annual responsibilities generally be to pay for that from the operating side? And so that's what we've tried to build into the rate structure as well.
But, but...
So you look at where you've been, but you also look at a prospective five, 10 years in the future, what is a likely fair share of the operating side to pay for, for capital expenses.
So, but, but we're also saying here that, that it's not just for depreciation and, or, or, you know, repair and replacement, you're really talking about projects that, that we have, that we have put forward, that really have nothing to do with replacement and repair. They are extending the, the system for growth, and...
Not that it's assigned to the operations side in this cost-of-service.
But, well, but if, if we're saying here that the, that the, that it was, this is on page two, that 25% of the improvements were to be funded by rate-funded capital, 75% were designated due to increased growth, that, that's, that's not what it shows here. It shows that a lot more is under wastewater operations, specifically on the 2005 refunding, which is the one I know the most about, because it stated there, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, I don't see anywhere the three-to-one business.
Well, I, I think you got to look at the, the total, I don't know if that was some rounding or not, but, but in total, the numbers show...
This is all projects. This is one project.
Right. You look at the aggregate number, not, I, I, I can't speak to how 2005 refunding got divided up, but when you look at it, you've got 3.1 million coming from access fees, you've got 1.7 million coming from operating. Now, that, that may skew more when we, we allocate the 2008, you can, you can impact that, and that's still a determination you can make, but I, I think a substantial amount, you know, 60-plus percent is in the access fee side.
But, but it said, it said in here that, over the years, the, the board and city administrator determined how it was going to be separated, but the only one that they tell about the separation on was the wastewater, and that was the 2005 refunding, and it definitely does not split up 25%, 75%.
Well, that's the failure of my memo, not, not the former city administrator or the former board, so we can, we can go back and tell you, in fact, I think you have a compendium of all the projects that we have, and the, the particular funding source to which it was assigned, on all of those spreadsheets that finance provided. And we'll be happy to share all of that, we've gone back year by year for 11 years to come up with all of the projects and the source of that. I, I would just point out that, that the debt service by funding source that you're looking at is for all projects that were funded with debt. That doesn't mean that was all projects, and the, and the 75-25 split, which was fairly common from, from the items that I looked at, is how the, the former boards elected to divide this one particular thing and several others that involved expansion of capacity. When the wastewater plant was upgraded, it was determined that 25% would be paid by operations from existing customers, but 75% of it would be funded by growth, which means access fees. That, that growth, if you look over on the next page, hasn't materialized so far, because we have a negative balance in our wastewater access fees. We've been loaning money from the system development fees to the access fees in order to pay the debt service at a rate of 75%. So, you know, I, I think, as you address this particular subject, the thing that I would look at is, you've got net about six billion dollars in the water fund, that's mostly system development fees, you've got about two million in the wastewater fund that would be all system development fees had we not had to cover for the access fees. Those are the amounts of money, and those were not touched over the last three to five years, because we had the water plant and because we had this idea of a new sewer treatment plant in the offing, and that's why it was not applied in advance to any of the particular projects. The other reason was, we did hold up on some of those projects for quite a while, and they've only really, in the last two years, been undertaken and put underway. And again, we're coming up to a point where we're going to need to allocate, as Eric has said, those funds that are in there, and see if we want to use some of those system development fees, which are eligible for those projects that involve maintenance and repairs, improvement of existing lines. Anything that's related to growth, I, I would encourage you, as we, as has been done in the past, that we use access fees for that.
Okay.
Well, well, I'm sorry.
Let's see if anybody else has any other questions.
Okay, but the, the numbers here are astonishing to me.
Anybody else, I, I, and I'm not sure, I mean, maybe, maybe, I mean, I'm comfortable with where these numbers are at the moment, so...
Are you comfortable with us being seven million, I mean, five million, seven hundred forty-six thousand dollars in the red on the, on the sewer access fees? And we have gone, and we have just, you know, it just occurred to me, we went ahead and, and took the, the, the money, the wharara money and everything, but it's really putting us in the hole still, even, I don't care how much it costs to us, it's still putting us in the hole, because it's going to add to the, the, what do you want to say? The, the amount of money that we are underwater here for the, for the access fees, because I'm sure that that would, that is the type of thing, that this last project that we did for Simmons Ridge is certainly for growth, it is certainly not to repay, replace, or repair anything that we have right now, and we've just kept on borrowing the money. I mean, whenever we're, we're really almost six million dollars behind in this, and it's just like, you know, I mean, it made me think, if you've got, if you see something that's on sale and it's 50% off and it seems wonderful, but if you don't have the money, you don't buy it.
Unless it's shoes.
Even if it is, I mean, you know, I, I, I mean, I, I, this is the first time I've really seen, I, I know that we get that, that water and sewer budget, but we really have not concentrated on it at all. In fact, I didn't know in 2008 that we were to, to allocate this, you know, maybe we were advised of that at that time, but I certainly did not know it. And whenever I looked at the allocations that we have right here, what we're, what we're doing is, if we take the system development fees and pay this, the, what should be paid by the access fees, it means that the, that the water customers or the sewer customers are actually, you know, just paying for the growth. And we, I thought that whenever we had the, the impact fees in terms of access here, that they were paying for themselves. I mean, it, the people, the people in the subdivisions that had to get sewer, they had to pay for it themselves. And then, but we, it looks like we are just, you know, extending it out into other areas, and those people...
Well, a lot of those access fees, while we're extending them, won't be collected until that growth is there.
Why?
And so, well, I mean, you can't be ready for, you can't have the growth unless you're ready for the growth. And what we've done here is got ourselves ready for the growth, so that those systems are put into place, and yes, they haven't been funded by the access fees, because you can't have the access fees until you have the growth, and you can't have the growth until you have the ability to do it.
I understand that.
So there is a relation between those two things, and you can't, you can't do that until it's in place.
But, but on the other hand...
And if 75-25 is an arbitrary number that was picked by a previous board and a previous city administrator, that is not a board, that is not a number that we picked, it's not done, I don't imagine it was done scientifically, my guess is it was a number that they just sort of pulled out. Now, I don't know whether I'm comfortable or not comfortable with that number, but that is not a number that we as a board have said, "This is what we're going to do." It was a number which, which was picked, but I will also go back to say, without the development, without the infrastructure in place, the growth can't take place. And one of the issues that we've been dealing with for a long, long time is not having infrastructure in place when the growth comes, and that's what, one of the things we're trying to get around here.
But didn't, wasn't the historical method that, whenever the development was coming out, that the developer paid to extend the infrastructure? That, that is what I remember as being the historic way that that was handled.
Well, the developer can't, couldn't pay for a five-mile creek expansion, there's no way. Who would you charge?
Well, whenever something was extended out to...
That was one of the most major projects that we had, who would you charge to do that? And the point matters, we will collect those access fees when that development occurs.
I think we have had some outside the city limit sewer and some projects not, of not that size, where the developer extended the lines and probably paid for the lines. We probably came along and paid an upsize cost on those, and if he needed six inches or eight inches for his project, we said we want 10 for future growth, we paid the upsize piping cost and depth cost, I mean, whatever it was like that. So there has been some instances where we did that, but not, but John, like I said, not on a magnitude of what you...
Not on a magnitude of a creek, and the other thing, and I don't want to get back into that discussion, but, but, you know, one of the issues that we ran into as we took over was our pumping hall issue, and the reason why we did that is because we didn't have it in place.
But, but on the other hand, there's also, and they mention it in here, the, the times whenever a, a developer extended water and/or sewer, and then they received recovery, that is, whenever access fees came in, they were paid back? So that meant to me that they were extending it, not the city, you know, perspective.
Well, I think there have been examples of that.
Absolutely, there have been.
But, but on the other hand, we didn't, you know, this group didn't, the, for the developments that five-mile creek could go into service were already approved, already in place, and, you know, I, I, and I, I'm not saying that to some degree, we can't do that, that was a giant construction project, and, and how, how you were going to divide that up, I, I don't know how you would do that. And, and if you did it, you could also make it to the point where it's so expensive to do it on developer, that there'd be no new development, or some people may like that. And at the end of the day, maybe that's some of the goals and objectives, but it's not in my mind. In my mind is that the city needs to be prepared for growth and development. This is one way that we do it. We do the same thing in roads, we've had that discussion, and we've talked a lot about, well, I'm not going to get into that, but that's the point. We either going to be behind the eight ball or in front of the eight ball, and I choose to be in front of it.
Well, but first of all, let me say, I certainly do not like the economic times that we have right now, which has had a lot more to do with the fact that we don't have this money in than any policy by the Board and Mayor and Alderman has to do with that.
Correct, I agree.
However, my point is, I do not want the existing water and sewer customers to be subsidizing and be paying for the, the, the projects that were required by, to be extended by growth. And that is what I was, I was worried about and what I was concerned about here, because whenever you look at how this is divided up, including the debt service here, because again, I never, e, e, even though we're saying this, 75%, 25%, I can't see that anywhere in here. But, but the other thing is, what are, what are our auditors saying about the fact that, that we're down this much? I know whenever I asked about that on the facilities tax, the comment was that it's all right to loan the money through the general fund for, you know, a few years, but then you're going to have to address this. I mean, what's our projected timeframe for getting back to even on this sewer access fee? I mean, what is that projection, year-wise, on getting back this 5.6 million dollars?
Well, if you're addressing that to me, if you can tell me when the projects will be done, I can tell you when we're going to...
Well, no, but I, I'm, I'm just saying, have the auditors said anything about this?
But the plan is to recover the money from the development that, through the access fees, that's the goal.
Absolutely. Well, let me ask you, what, what do you do with it? What do you do if you don't get it back within a reasonable number of years? Because they told me on the facilities tax that, that the general fund might have to start forgiving the loans that it had done, and the general fund obviously can't forgive these loans.
Well, you're, you're talking about the distance between two funds. On the general fund and the facilities tax, if you have an inner fund transfer, then you, you have an issue if you don't have a reasonable expectation of recovering the money within a certain period of time. And we're still arguing over what that period of time is, but it appears to be something in excess of a year. If, if, if they're not satisfied, they being the auditors, then we'll have to address that. Here, you're talking about, in the same fund, the sewer fund is all the same, whether it's system development fees, whether it's access fees, operational revenue, it's all within the same fund. So there is no control or restriction on what the loan should be between revenues within the same fund.
So in other words, this is unlike the situation where if you, if you have an impact fee for roads or whatever, and a facilities tax, then those are, the, the fees there are designated for, are required to only be used for certain purposes. So you're saying anything that comes into water, anything that comes into sewer... So you're saying anything that comes into water, anything that comes into sewer can pay for, but that goes back to my point. I don't think that the water customer and the sewer customer ought to be paying for the extension that, that's expected through growth.
And I don't know that that's, I don't know that I would agree that that's happening here. I don't see where the numbers reflect that. You're still paying, uh, somewhere around two to one, uh, from growth fees compared to what rate payers or operating is paying on the capital side. So I, I think it's a matter of how you set that balance going forward. And we'll have some opportunities to discuss that on the, the projects that are nearing completion. And this board can help make that determination about what the right allocation is for those proj, for those projects among, uh, operations-based or rate payer-funded and what is funded through, uh, the revenue that's coming through, through growth-related fees.
But the system development fee is not supposed to be a fee for the growth. It's supposed to be to repair and replace. And I thought that's why we were having to get the extra million dollars and the extra three million dollars was for repair, replacement, and maintenance. And so it should be that the system development fees pay those, at least based on what the municipal code says.
If I may, to the, to the extent where that is possible. But at least we know for sure on the water side, that's not going to be possible because we're running out of potential customers. Here's what I would leave you with, because I'm, I'm sure you want to bring this to a close at some point. The Jackson Thornton people have looked at these numbers. They're aware of these numbers. They understand what the capital requirements are going to be going forward. And the, and the numbers that they selected for rate-funded capital out of operations is in addition to any of these fees that we have set aside. They're in addition to those. And, uh, again, to do the cost of service study, they have to figure not, not what we have to pay for that's in the past, but what we have to pay for or going to have to pay for in the, in the future.
Well, see, those are the things that I was asking, what have we done in the past? Why, you know, why, what is the projection? You know, it just gave us a million dollars. It didn't say, what, for, anything. It just said, uh, repair and replacement and maintenance. That's all it said. It, I mean, you know, they never said where they came up with any of those numbers. And, and so it just, that was the reason I was saying, what have we been spending? I mean, is it reasonable to project another million dollars or another three million dollars? You know, what's our, what's our record of this? And where did those numbers come from? And as I say, that part has not been described to us in any, in any form at all. And it just, and as I say, whenever you look at the numbers, I mean, you know, one of the things about it is, again, I go back to, I didn't want to, you know, I don't, the reason I asked about the division of it was because I didn't want the existing customers to be paying for the growth.
Well, about two weeks ago, you requested all of the information from the prior ten years. And we're in the process of compiling that. We've given you what we could give you quickly, which is summaries of each, one-page summaries of each project. We're continuing to develop those numbers. And long before you get to the third reading of this ordinance, we'll be able to provide that to you. We just don't have it readily available tonight. But I, I would still caution you that, that you can't just look over your shoulder. You've got to look forward.
Absolutely.
And what the consultant has put in here is a number that he feels comfortable with based on a hundred and, what, forty million dollars' worth of plant and equipment that we have? And, and depreciation and a useful life of approximately fifty years. And, you know, the numbers that he had for future projects coincides very neatly with that, that average life factor. And that's where he came up with these numbers. You know, there's not a million dollars that we can tell you in the water plant where it's going to be spent next year, or three million in the sewer plant. But we know over a period of five years, there's going to be five million in water and fifteen million in sewer that's going to have to be spent to improve existing lines and should be paid for by the current rate customers.
Yeah, no, did you say fifteen?
We're going to have to move on.
I know we are, but again, I want to see, you're talking fifteen million? How much have we spent in the last fifteen years even?
More than that.
More than that.
For, for, to replace existing lines?
Well, if you're, if you're asking just for wastewater alone, I can guarantee you it's more than fifteen billion dollars over the last ten or twelve years.
Let me give you some numbers from our audit reports. The June report of two thousand and one, we had total plant and equipment of ninety-five million. We now have a hundred and ninety-seven million. Now, that includes some developer donations, so it's not all that, we, we didn't buy all of it. Even after depreciation, there's a hundred and fifty-one million in total assets of water, wastewater reclaimed. There's a lot of money in the ground out there.
Well, we spend a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, that's true. All right, well, let's, let's go on. I mean, we, we, again, this is another six-week process for approval. And we've got lots of more time to have discussions on that. Okay, item number eight, consideration and rejection of all bids for purchase of vehicular traffic data collection contract services for the Traffic Operations Center Division of the Engineering Department. Do we have any concerns or questions on that? Eric Gardner's here.
That just seems to be appropriate.
Okay, all right, that's good. We get some opportunities to do some more with the money, so if you'd like to go back.
Item number nine, consideration resolution two thousand and ten dash seven-six, a resolution to approve the city's commitment for the Jackson National Life Fast Track Infrastructure Development Program and authorize the request to incur cost prior to contract execution under the FIDP.
Just a little bit of update from the memo that I sent out to you. We have recently, as of today, received an updated cost from Middle Tennessee Electric. So the numbers that we're looking at are changing. However, uh, the FIDP or Fast Track Infrastructure Development Program grant is being proposed to be submitted for the seven hundred and forty-one plus, several one hundred and forty-one thousand plus dollars. Uh, we chose to go that route with those type numbers to ensure that we can get the full allocated or committed, uh, funds from ECD, Economic Community Development, uh, which is three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so with, with that being said, that's the max we're going to get out of the FIDP grant program, would be three hundred thousand dollars from the state. They are, the state is also, as a part of this project, been told at least over seven hundred thousand dollars for training. Eric was going to look and see if there's even more funds than that, that they're paying for this particular, uh, company to come, come to Franklin. But the cost that we're looking at here is, is, again, to explain it, we're trying to right now just get the resolution in place where we can submit for the FIDP grant. Also, the authorization for the mayor to sign the commitment to incur cost waiting on that grant. That way we can go and start doing things. We are going to have additional contracts. We'll have an agreement with Jackson National Life. We'll have an agreement with Middle Tennessee Electric. We may have an additional agreement with a consultant to do work because work is, some of the work has been done, but there's going to have to be construction administration. So we're working on those particular contracts. Jackson National Life will be, uh, subject to paying all cost above what we decide or what you decide that you're going to do as a local match. Right now it's being, uh, proposed as a two hundred thousand dollar local match, which would be a file, a total of state three hundred, city two hundred, and then everything else would be Jackson National Life. That will be an agreement that will be coming to you. But we needed to get this one going before we did those other agreements. Uh, that's a quick explanation of where we are on this. I'll answer any questions of, if you have any, so it's an ongoing thing.
Looking at the, the project overall, kind of stepping back from the details of the, the infrastructure here, it's, it's approximately seven hundred and fifty jobs, most of them new to our area. There are a few relocations, but the vast majority will be new hires to our area. Uh, it is, as David mentioned, there is a substantial state participation in this project, not just the three hundred thousand that is there for the fast track, but there's also seven hundred and fifty thousand that's a job training credit program. And then there's a headquarters credit that will be based on the, the final new jobs added to the state that I, I can't give you a number on, except for I've been told it's a substantial number. It's expected to be a substantial number. So you've got a significant state participation. The county has identified about a half million dollars in terms of tax abatement they will provide. And the portion that seemed to fit here for the city's role is this component that will provide some infrastructure enhancement in terms of redundant power service, not only to this site, but also to another development site adjacent to this. So it will, will not only help this project, but another future project down the line. Uh, so this, that, that's kind of the, in total, what is on the table. Uh, it requires the board to approve it and move it forward, but it is what was put on the table when we were looking at this opportunity as a development for the community, so.
Plus the return on investment for two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, it's a four and a half, five million dollar annual salary payment for sure, and not counting other things that may come into play, so.
Yeah, multi-million dollars too in terms of the building improvement.
I have just a couple of questions, although this certainly is a project that, that, you know, we need to support. Uh, whenever you say the county is going to give an abatement of about half a million dollars, is this in our, that TIF district for the...
It's not a real estate tax abatement. It's, it's, um, which, because the building's already built. So, so there's no giving on the real estate taxes. These were personal property taxes. Uh, and then also some, they gave, they're giving out, uh, which they do a lot, annual passes to their, to the rec center and some other things that go on and on with that.
And that's beyond the half million.
But it doesn't affect, doesn't affect our TIF district at all.
Okay, so, so even if it's, it was in that area, since it's already built, that, that's only for...
That's right, it doesn't have any effect. That building is already in our TIF district and already paying taxes.
Uh, the other comment that I wanted to make is, whenever we were talking about the small projects, I recall that you said, you know, sometimes you might not want to commit that because something may come up that's worthy that you need to do. This is a great example, I would write it.
And Eric and I had that discussion this afternoon, yes.
But, but this is, this is the very reason we shouldn't commit all of that.
That they're all going, and this won't be the last one. And, and we, you know, we as a city need to be prepared to, to, to do that. I mean, we are constantly being asked, what can you provide us as a city? Most of the time, we, we don't say much because we don't have a lot to give. I mean, our tax rate is as low as it could possibly be. There's even, even, and a lot of these things are in our TIF district, which means we can't give up on that anyway. So, um, these are the little things. The infrastructure things are great because they, they don't only help the current tenant, but they help additional tenants. But you're right, that's why in that small CIP list, we need to have some money left over for these kind of things. Okay, item number ten, consideration of ordinance to be entitled and ordinance admitting various sections of the city Frank municipal code, um, building utility, etcetera codes for the purposes of combining the city's existing technical boards of appeals into a single building and street standards board of appeals. I, we've, um, and we did not talk about this.
We have not.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
One of the things this tries, this, what this tries to address primarily is we've got a number of technical experts that make determinations in, in looking at and applying various codes. And this provides a, a technical body to provide an oversight or review of the determinations that our various technical experts on staff make. And this would provide sort of a consolidated group of those, of technic, outside technical experts to review the determinations that folks make in our building and neighborhood services or in our engineering fields that, that are trying, trying to interpret, um, the various codes and applying them in the individual situations they're looking at. So this is a, an effort to try to consolidate that into one, one group with that expertise and to provide that oversight as we make the determinations we need to make and working with folks, so.
And this does give, I mean, there, we're currently working on a situation where there is no appeal process. I mean, the only appeal process is going to, to the court. And, um, now, we've got a couple others that that's not the case. But by having professionals involved in this, it does, it does make it a little bit more objective. Uh, and I think it's good for us as a city, uh, through our process, to have a, a systematic appeals process for certain things. And, and having one board that's comprised of that would be a lot easier to manage than having three different boards that meet every so often.
The, the question is, how many of each expert of each specialty would be a member of the board? Because, I mean, the same person that would know about electrical is not going to know about street technical standards, I don't think. So the reason to have the, the experts or the, the specialists there would be because they know about their specialty. If you just have two of each on here, that, they're not going to know. I mean, you know, there'll be two people that know about the specialty and the other people won't. It's not like these are really overlapping, because I would think the plumbing board would not, as I say, wouldn't know about the electrical and, and all those things there. So I just wondered about putting this together. It just, I mean, is, is there a problem? I mean, is there, is there, it says that it, it would be, you know, it would save the, the staff time of getting people to, to serve on the board. I mean, is there a problem there? They don't meet very often, do they?
No, no, they don't. And thank you, and first of all, I really, I would be remiss in not mentioning our former, former employee, Steve Cook, that had been with us for a lot of years, that really was the impetus to, to move this forward in trying to put together, um, a group of qualified professionals that understand the, the codes. And it, and it really gets to, to your question, Alderman Peterson, is having licensed professionals, licensed design professionals that understand how development regulations, building codes are implemented and where they come from, will provide them the ability to interpret them. And just as some of you have expertise in historic preservation or finance or development, you impart that wisdom on your colleagues and come to a decision based on, on what you, you gather and are shared. And that's what these people do. They're all licensed. They've all been in the field and the, and if you see in the ordinance, that have that expertise and work with their colleagues and peers in these different areas. Again, we don't, um, we don't...
Uh-oh. A woman who has something to say. I've seen that woman before.
We don't have, we don't meet very often, but it does save us the ability from having numerous different appeals boards that are required by the different code disciplines.
And if you had two of each profession, professionals, why would you need more than that?
To specifically answer your question, what we felt was interesting, we're required by, we adopt the international codes, all of them. And we have a plumbing code, electrical code, and we're supposed to have a board for each one of those codes. And each one requires the same people. And that's why we've pulled this together. And it's interesting...
So you mean on the plumbing code, then you would need, but you, would you need plumbers? Or would you need, who else would you need? You wouldn't need people that do the street standards?
Well, you, you do have to have somebody that's a civil engineer to understand plumbing systems, infrastructure. Um, an architect to understand design. Because when you're looking at interpreting a professional code, a regulation, you're looking at really appealing the interpretation of our inspectors and the code official to provide a reasonable alternative that meets the intent of the code. And that's why it's used very rarely. So anytime you look at those interpretations, you do need a cross-section of individuals depending on the installation. As you might be saying or referring to, in this instance, something internal to your house relating to plumbing, which we don't have, appeals like that at all, or very little, could be handled by a plumbing professional. But when it involves a plumbing system that may include sewer and water, then you need those other design professionals with a broader experience.
So what would be the makeup of this board, this single board?
On page seven of the, the first ordinance, and we have two different ordinance. One is twelve that adopts the international codes, the building codes and, and title seven, which pertains to the fire codes. But really, they're all saying the same thing, but on, on ordinance...
Page nine, page nine, section twelve point twelve oh two.
So in other words, they're not even two people? They are...
There are a licensed electrician, a licensed plumber, two licensed architects, three professional engineers pertaining to civil, mechanic... three professional engineers pertaining to civil, mechanical, structural, electrical disciplines, one civil engineer practicing traffic discipline, and then one qualified professional with fire and life safety knowledge and skills.
And so what do we have on the boards that we do have now?
We don't have.
We don't have.
That's what we're, that's what we're creating.
So we have some boards though, don't we, now? Do we have some appeals boards?
No.
They haven't met in a long time.
No, that doesn't mean they didn't meet in a long time.
We do not have a plumbing board. We're required to have a plumbing board and electrical board, all those kinds of boards. And we don't, we never established them. So when we were looking through the codes, we realized since they all require the same number of people, we'll just create one massive board that can do all of the international codes. We've never had.
So our choices are not to stay what we have, stay with what we have?
Exactly.
Or do this. Our choices are create a proliferation of plumbers, electricians, and whatnot boards, or do this. Yes.
And you've either got to populate multiple.
Either way, either way, we can't just keep doing what we've been doing.
We have a building board of appeals, but now these new codes require one for each.
We have one for each code.
Or we have combined.
Or one.
Okay.
And that's what I see. I see you all.
And since they be so frequent, it just wouldn't seem to have that many.
And I will also tell you that having dealt with all of these people, none of them work in vacuum. They all, they all understand a little bit about all the other different trades, because they have to work together. Electricians have to work with plumbers, plumbers work with architects. So there'll be a knowledge of that, which I think will add, to some degree, might even add some objectivity beyond just a plumber. I mean, I think it would be good for our civil engineer just to look at things a little bit in a broader perspective. So I think, I think that's a good, a good movement.
So are we thinking that it would still meet or not? I mean?
They'll meet as required.
But at least, at least annually, they have to meet and do a training.
And it's far easier to keep this group together than many groups.
But we said we'd have a.
We have the one building board of appeals, but knew we were, we were not complying totally. And that's why Steve Cook had been working on this before he left and played with the city.
Okay, so that answers 10, 11, 12. Consideration of resolution to determine property at 200 Downs Boulevard as surplus acquisition.
Back in 2007, the board declared and conveyed about .58 acres on Downs Boulevard to a property owner. The same property owner has approached us about adding basically about two tenths of an acre that's immediately adjacent to the property that was purchased from the city. This is at essentially the same prorated value as what was paid back in 2007. It would be about $14,000 to add this property. And so that approach has been made to the city and we're advancing it to you now.
And our estimate is that it's worth less than $25,000?
Yeah, it would fit into that definition, so you'd be able to declare it and make a transaction with this owner.
What is that, this adjacent location?
It's right next to that car dealership, that used car dealership on Downs and Columbia right across from Hardware Store.
Okay.
It's where Margaret Martin had her big sign up.
It's available.
I had one there too, Margaret. It's okay. Item number 13, consideration of ordinance 2010 dash 72, an ordinance increase from $10,000 to $25,000, the dollar amount of purchase at or above which is required public advertisement and competitive bidding. This came out of the budget.
We talked about this in the committee. We were all in agreement on it. The only concern I had was that is a lot of money not to have to have a sealed bid, you know, but otherwise we were, we were supportive of it.
Any other comments?
It doesn't mean we won't, we'll be doing a competitive process. It's just the more formal bidding process, which costs us a lot of time, many times. So it's, it's a discretion of what's the right time to do it. And there may be times below this level that we still feel it's appropriate to go out to bid.
Okay. Item 14, similar ordinance increase from $4,000 to $10,000, the minimum value of city surplus personal property for which is required sealed bids. Same comment. Item number 15, consideration of changing the method of calculating building permit fees for new detached, single-family dwellings and additional, and additions moving away from the estimated value of construction to habitable square footage.
Thank you. Tom Myers, Sharon Martins, and Gary, Building and Neighborhood Services Department, have been discussing this for quite some time. And what we're proposing to do, and we haven't drafted an ordinance yet, just want to share with you an analysis that we did, is for detached, single-family homes and for additions to detached, single-family homes, that we're proposing to get away from the valuation and base the building permit fee, not the road impact fee, facilities tax, any other fee, just the building permit fee on the square footage, because it's easily calculated. And then we can start to begin to do better performance measurement in what it takes to actually inspect certain sized buildings. And as you can see, and I know Gary would more than be happy to jump up, is that there's no method to what contractors come in and say the value of their home is. And we have to, or Gary does most of the time, try to debate what's a reasonable fee.
You mean you're not getting the absolute, maybe the full value presented when they come to?
Something like that.
A lot of unfinished space, huh, Mr. Lofman?
So we're not looking to raise any fees, but you can see what we're proposing is basically put the average of what we have been charging based on these different scenarios, which is 37 cents a square foot of the living space. And then if they put an accessory building or something else, that would still be based on value. We're only proposing new detached, single-family dwellings and room additions to detached, single-family dwellings.
I think this is a good method and it, and it kind of squares everything off.
Do other people do this?
Yes.
Because I couldn't figure out.
They've all figured out that builders, developers always come in with the full value of whatever.
But it's really about being able to equate what our service level is to the value of the fees. And we can do that better if we do it.
Well, I couldn't figure out, how did you get the, the fees from the, I can see how we got our own examples, but how did you get the examples from, you know, of comparable examples from the other, the other communities? I don't.
Well, we contacted them and looked at their fee schedules and talked, talked to them. And we thought we chose some progressive communities in other states as well as our neighbors to try to draw that comparison.
Okay. Item number 16.
Plan review fee is shown for some of these on the comparisons, but we have plan review fees.
Not for single family residential.
So that would make some of these considerably lower than what we are charging.
And that's something that we've been talking with the design professionals with, because as you might imagine, having an inspector go out to a property, somebody building a several thousand square foot home, and that inspector saying that doesn't meet a certain minimum code, it'd be much better for that inspector to say it doesn't meet the approved set of plans. But the City of Franklin has been, has never accepted plans for new, single-family dwellings. And now with new energy codes coming into place, we're beginning conversations with the design professionals to start looking at plans. And hopefully, we can provide a better service in the process as well.
We don't, an inspector doesn't have plans when he goes out to look at.
Not unless the builder has it. But they haven't looked at those plans previously to make sure they meet minimum standards.
He does it onsite.
Does it onsite. And that's a very precarious position to put our employees in, to go out and tell somebody that made an installation that it's incorrect and it needs to be changed.
What can we do for this?
We're working on it.
But that's the whole point of the inspection.
That's right.
If they weren't prepared to say that, they shouldn't have gone in the first place. Right?
Well, you're making an assumption that every tradesperson does work in a professional and workmanlike manner.
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. If that were the case, then we wouldn't send inspectors either.
Period, period.
I'm saying that the, that the very point of the inspector is to leave either a green or a red sticker on something. Period. Right?
Ideally, if you're a professional tradesman, which we have many, then you can always leave a green, a green sticker and we provide an explicit guarantee to our future residents that they're getting a quality.
And let me argue maybe, not argue, but state the other side of that argument is that if we did review plans, there would probably be a whole lot more approved inspections than disapproved inspections, because the, the, the plans would have already been checked and monitored. And, and I will tell you, having gone through a remodel thing, that we were turned down a whole lot just because my guy wasn't fully aware of what the city required and didn't get a full view at every inspection, so that, you know, we'd get one thing and then another thing. If they had a full set of plans, we knew what was there, then inspector wouldn't have to go until the work was completed and it could say, and do a checklist. So there, there can be some advantages in the long run. It could be actually save time for the builder dealing with, especially in residential trades. Commercial trades are a little different, but residential.
I would like to add just one thought, and we'll bring this back. The city has adopted a national code. Those national codes are minimum, minimum standards. I would hope that our residents and we all expect more. And so when an inspector comes out to put that red tag on, that's a red flag. And having plans, you're right, would increase the quality of workmanship that we receive.
Okay. Item number 16, consideration of professional services agreement with CDM for the Integrated Water Resource Plan Phase Two in an amount not to exceed $1.459,640,000 to be funded from the water, wastewater, reclaimed water, and stormwater budgets. And half the audience are with CDM here today, so hello, everybody. Good to see you.
We developed a scope of service around what came out of Phase One of the Integrated Water Plan. This takes certain aspects to a much finer level of detail that will help facilitate decision-making by the board as we decide what, what projects are in the best interest of the community long-term when we look at this as a 20 to 30-year planning horizon. I'll let David and CDM folks describe for you maybe in a little more detail some of the aspects of this, but, but the big dollars are tied around water plant, wastewater plant, and, and system-related issues.
Didn't we have that discussion just a little while ago?
I was going to say, where's this money coming from out of these funds? I mean, I'm serious, where's the money coming from?
Well, I think that'll be addressed.
Yeah, out of these funds.
Well, you have the breakdown on the funds.
I see that, but I'm saying.
I can tell you the stormwater funds.
That's okay.
We have no problems.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that one.
Reclaimed water fund is the same way from what I understand.
Where's the wastewater coming from? I mean, seriously, where is it coming from?
Part of your capital.
It's coming from what?
Part of your capital program.
It's a big part of your capital program.
Well, I, you know, I mean, this is something that the current property, I mean, customers need too. But in fact, though, really, you know, it is really for looking ahead.
It's a little bit of both without question.
This is, this is for.
It's just coming out of their general funds.
Upgrade, looking ahead, et cetera. But it, you know, it really can come out of your, out of your regular funding, because this is to meet future requirements for permitting and things like that. So that, that affects your existing customers also.
Well, and we added this into the, the rate fees that we're talking. By the way, I'm sorry to bring this back up. No, listen to this. Didn't I ask to have those projected for 10 years? I asked for that yesterday.
I can give you an estimate on that. It's very difficult to give you it to the level of detail, but I can give you that.
Now, let me tell you what, the guy the other night, Thursday night, he was, he was doing it, you know, real time.
Well, as you add five years of costs, the further we go out, the less certain we are about what those costs are. That's a little more challenging. Plus, as you spread it out, you have a, a greater deficiency that you're not meeting over time that, that has some compounding impact. But just to give you a rough estimate, the water, 4% per year, if you looked at it on a 10-year basis, we estimate that's somewhere around 2.5% a year. If you take the 7% that was in sewer, and you try to spread that 10 years, estimate that's somewhere around between 4% and 5%, probably a little closer to 5%.
Hey, I like those numbers because we have the next meeting. I thought we were, I was going to have them today. I just realized.
Well, we did the best we could with that. That's a good rough estimate of where those numbers would end up.
Well, I mean, money to the, money to the customer. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and that, what was 4% converts into about 2.5%. What was 7% converts to somewhere around 5% is our estimate at looking at what it would take if you spread it over 10 years. Now, we would not recommend spreading it out that, that much further. You're just sort of kicking further down the road what you need to do in terms of meeting the full costs of operating the system. Five years, we think is about as far as you should push that envelope, but.
We've never done it before. Let's get on to this.
I would say that's why we're in the situation we're in.
But, but again, that's why I want to know what we spent already, but let's go on with this as a set.
Well, the other thing.
Money makes a difference.
The other thing that this, this plan will do is it will give us projections of projects we need to do, costs that that's going to be, et cetera. For, actually, the plan is to go out 30 years, but as, as just been mentioned, you only have good numbers for five to 10 years of what you're looking at. But this will be looking at trying to help with prioritization of projects as they're going to be needed to meet the requirements as, as a standard. So with that, I'll just let, everybody knows Chris Provost with CDM. He has a few little slides he wants to go through.
Just briefly, the next slide, Eric. This is the process. You've seen the similar diagram for Phase One. We looked at some of the comments that we had when we were presenting this, I think, September 21st, the last workshop, last time I was here. And we, we looked at the interaction, particularly with the public forums and the stakeholder workshops and how that feeds into ultimately a recommendation that comes up to the board, and that's that yellow box that's sort of the endpoint of all this. If you step down, and so that, those top three things are sort of the public interaction and stakeholder process for, for the Phase Two part of this project. The next two lines, the integrated modeling and the utility-specific analysis are where most of this work gets done. We talked before about a dynamic river model that will be developed and used, and this will be available for a lot of other things, for stormwater and other programs long-term for the city, but will also help us to demonstrate the feasibility and the effectiveness of the various options that are being considered. In the utility-specific analysis, we talked about each of those things in some, some bit of detail at our last meeting. As was mentioned, the major pieces of work are at the water, water facilities, including an analysis of biosolids options for wastewater. The specialized analysis that will be done, part of that is, you look over to the right, there's a rate impact analysis that will be done. We'll be working, when we get to that point, with your rate consultant to look at the projects that have been identified and the sequencing and the schedule of those and when they fit into your overall funding plan and what potential impact that may or may not have. And, you know, and as David said, in five and 10-year increments. Then ultimately, there'll be a comprehensive schedule developed based on the projects that are selected. And there's also a regulatory component to this to, to coordinate with them to make sure that the plan, they're not going to give you a guarantee, but make sure it's permissible as presented. So those are the major components of the work. Next slide, Eric. Again, I'll, in, for time, I won't repeat all this. These are the main, if you're looking at the cost, this is where most of the cost of this work is coming from on these, these four bullets with the, the modeling, the facility evaluations, the impact on the collection systems, and your analysis of biosolids options. This is a table that David put together. This is, I think you have this in your packet. This is the analysis of the funding and where the different components come from. And I think there's a summary of that on the next slide, Eric, which just summarizes the various cost components and which funds they come from. I will point out, Eric and I, or David, and I'm not sure how this was factored into this analysis, for Phase One, we're actually coming in under budget, so you get a refund on Phase One. Somewhere, we're trying to figure out exactly, somewhere around $50,000, and I assume that can be applied to this as well. And just so you understand, that's the way these costs have been developed too. These are not to exceed numbers. If we get done with the analysis and we haven't spent it, then the money is not, you know, you don't. you don't pay us for work we don't do. And the same thing, if we get in the process and we're, we're down the road on, on some particular aspect of this, and we get either to the steering committee or the stakeholder, and they say, you know, this, this is not going to pan out, you guys can just stop working on that particular option, and we stop, and then those costs don't get incurred. So with that, any questions?
One thing I did want to point out too is, if you look at the, Eric, if you go back to the worksheet, their worksheet, if you look at the third line item under Task One, Cumberland River Pipeline, this, this actually came out as something that we wanted to discover, to investigate, evaluate further at the very end of our Phase One. And this is done previously. It is a very expensive alternative as far as looking at something. We do have a generalized cost. I've spelled this out in the memo to you. Generalized cost of somewhere upwards around $100 million to provide this line to the Cumberland River. What we're proposing is that we, we staff are proposing anyways, that we take this, this line out at this time, hold it in abeyance, and we not fund that part, which is $35,260, and use the estimated amount of monies or estimated cost for this line as we do the evaluations for all the alternatives. We think it will quickly show that it's not feasible to even consider doing the line. If it shows during these evaluations that it's close, and we may need to really evaluate this further and go, and look at it closer, then we can go back and add this monies back in. But right now, we feel that we just go and take that out and, and just hold, hold those monies in abeyance.
Are you, are you talking about a raw water line?
Raw water line, yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, it would be a raw water line, this over 20 miles while to get to the Cumberland River. So, and it's through...
We can't just suck it back up to Harpeth?
This very densely populated area that we...
That's a good plan though.
So anyway, that's, that's what we have coming to you.
Forty miles.
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments. I've been involved with the process as far, you know, I'm the steering committee and also the stakeholders group. And I think the first point that I want to make, that it is a long-range plan, and that's something that we've struggled with. And during the pump and haul phase of our political career, we, we all mentioned that maybe we needed a long-range plan, and I'm glad to see we're getting there. Just to kind of reiterate a couple of things. Number one, it is very comprehensive, it's implementable, and hopefully fundable in all systems of water that we have here at the city. Unfortunately, we ended up with too many alternatives coming out of Phase One, so that's one reason that this has a little higher cost figure, that we weren't able to reach enough conclusions. This not only involves a technical analysis, modeling, and, and ranking of projects that we're looking at, but also will come up and identify what the best alternatives are for us, long-range. That's my understanding, and Chris, you correct me if I'm wrong, but even a portion of this involves about a 10% of the design phase, which is what is necessary to do some of the preliminary permitting and some of the cost analysis of the project, and also figuring out what the financial plan would be to pay for it.
That's correct.
You know, we've already spent, we haven't spent a half a million, but, you know, what, $400,000 or so. And I think I would strongly urge everybody to consider that we should move forward with this next phase, because it is something that's important for the long-range future of our community in this critical area.
Are we looking in this study to, to, Ken brought up, financial plans to pay for it? I assume it's going to be pretty in-depth.
The, the financial plan? Well, yeah. We'll be working with your rate consultant. We've actually talked to them about integrating them, once we have an idea of what the projects are, and after enough engineering has been done, so that we have a pretty good grasp on what the cost is, to work with them in, in terms of the phasing, when these projects, projects occur, and then what their costs are. And not only their capital costs, but what their operating costs as well, so those can be plugged into the model that they already have, and then they'll evaluate then the impact. And it is sort of a, an iterative process, because they may say, look, if you, you know, here's what you got based on what you told me, if you move that project out a year instead of having it this year, or what, is it, is it possible for you to move it out three years, because then we can retire some bonds or something like that? It'll be sort of an iterative process with them, to work with them on the best way to schedule these projects that have a minimal financial impact. So, yeah, it's a pretty...
So you all will be working closely together, and I assume with Russ as well?
Yes.
And as far as funding this particular project, I do want to point out also, this is going to be over more than just this fiscal year funding. If you choose to approve this contract at your next meeting, it will be coming to you for voting next meeting unless you defer it. We, we are looking at probably 75% of the funding in this year's budget, and then 25% of the funding would be in next year's budget of the 1.4, whatever, funding for the plan. So this would be, could be spread out over, over a two-year funding period.
Michael?
A question now. Ken talked about design. So if one of the things that you recommend that we do, say, in the next five years, is to put a new cell in the existing wastewater treatment plant with pumps and so forth, and would, would this be an actual design, where you'd say, put in X unit, put in X pump, put in X?
Yeah, it'll be, and again, it's, it's, it's approximately a 10% level. It'll be enough to know how big the pump should be, you know, what the horsepower is, what its service requirements are. It doesn't go as far as saying, this is the pump you should pick, and this is the model number, and that type of thing. It goes far enough so that we can size it. And most, and the main reason to do that is so that we're not dealing with a number we're grabbing out of the air from the cost standpoint, so that we can put an accurate construction estimate on whatever it is that we're looking at. And so you take the, you take the engineering enough, far enough along so that you can do that. In some cases, we may have to go beyond 10% to get to that point. In some cases, we may not. It won't be something that you can take out and bid. You'd still have to go through a detailed design process.
But get a good, solid cost estimate on each element, so that you really have a good sense of the cost of, of what, of that option.
But we still have to pay for the design.
You still have complete design to bid.
Most of these facilities that we're talking about, particularly if, when we do the analysis on the Goose Creek Advanced Treatment Process, there'll be a lot of details that will have to be done during the design process. So, yeah, there's, there's definitely more design work to be done.
Okay, let's...
Do we need to narrow some of the projects down?
Well, at this point, coming out of the Phase One, that we, the stakeholders group was unable to narrow it down. We were hoping to come out of Phase One. We're the one like two or three.
$2, $5 million.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, let me, let me put that in perspec, I agree with you. I understand it. And yes, if you took some options off the table, to say, for example, we're not going to build a new wastewater plant on the south side of town, that reduces the cost of this...
Oh, we're not going to build it on the east side of our 65.
Whatever. If you just say, we're not going to build another wastewater plant, we don't have to evaluate that option. So that, that, that comes in. So that is something you can do. Just for perspective though, let me, let me give you this. I understand it is a lot of money, but, and I get asked a lot at this stage in any kind of project or program, where you're looking at planning and preliminary engineering numbers. The dollars, the bang for the buck on the dollars you're spending now are higher than anything you'll ever get. Keep in mind, you're talking about roughly, depending on which option you choose, a lifecycle cost for these options. Again, a 20 to 30-year capital and operating cost for these options, somewhere between $600 and $800 million. This is less than two, the, the cost of this planning next phase is less than 2/10 of a percent of that. If you, we can back off on it, and we can do less detail and less precise of the analysis, and that would lower the cost. The potential oversights and the mistakes you make there from doing that, the numbers that you have to, the consequences of that on down the road, either in construction or, wait a second, that wasn't the right project, make these numbers look pretty insignificant. But, but, but having said that, yes, you can come back, that is your prerogative, take, take things off the table, or, or cut down the level of detail.
And the bulk of the money, I mean, just to summarize, kind of where I see the bulk of this money being water treatment plant, at a...